I call the meeting to order tonight, Thursday, April 9th, 2020 at 7:00 PM.
This conference will now be recorded.
For the town of Hebron, I believe that we have the Pledge of Allegiance.
We do, and with that, we can turn it over to Sam Isarelli.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tierney.
If I could have Bryn and Ryan Mallorin stand and start the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our hand over heart.
I put.
To the flag.
The United States of America. Two public. Which stands one nation. Under God. And indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
This next section is reserved for public comment, but before we do that, I don't know, Andy, did you want to go over some of the protocols that we're going to do since we are doing it via computer?
I did, Dan. I think this is the appropriate time to do that if everybody agrees.
I would, I would suggest.
Yeah, good idea.
Go ahead, Andy.
Okay, well, welcome, everyone. So we came up with a protocol for these virtual meetings and it's, so official meeting started at 7:00 PM. It's a go-to meeting and we started at 6:45 to try to get everybody squared away. Meeting attendees may join the meeting either via electronic device or phone or both.
You're 10 o'clock.
Audio and video will be tested as you enter the meeting, which we've done. The selectmen and the town manager cameras and audio will be on during the meeting. Camera is not mandatory. It is to be used if desired and available. Guests entering the meeting will be asked to turn off their camera. All guests' mics will be muted unless they are recognized to speak. Please be sure your device is fully charged or connected to a power supply because go-to meetings uses a lot of power. Please silence your cell phone. If there is background noise where you are, please mute your mic and only turn it on when you wish to speak. So during the meeting, the chairman will call the meeting to order and take a roll call. Pledge of Allegiance will be recited, which we did. The town manager will review meeting conduct and protocol, which we're doing. Each time you speak, please or you must state first and last name so the viewers know who is speaking. Try to avoid speaking over each other. Pause before you speak to be sure prior speaker is done. When votes are taken, the chairman will poll each member for their vote. For public comment, guests will be asked to type comments in the chat box. Each person wishing to make a public comment will be recognized. Their mics are muted and they can share their camera if they wish to be seen. There will be a public comment, which was added, whether it be one at the beginning and we added one at the end because of this type of meeting. The meeting will be recorded. If you have any technical difficulties before or during the meeting, please call Donna at this number, which is 860-205-1898.
Okay, thank you. Before we get into the public comment, I'm Dan Larson, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Gail Richmond, Vice Chair of the Board.
John Collins, Selectman.
Mark Rivera, Selectman.
Peter Casper, Selectman.
All are attended and accounted for. Thank you very much. Again, Daniel Larson speaking. We are now in for our public comment section of the meeting. I'll have to ask, is there anyone out there, Donna, who is here for public comment?
There are no public comments at this time.
Okay, hearing no public comment. Moving on to the next section, which is our Good to Know, and again, I'll turn that over to Andy.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Larson. Donna, I have them here with me. I'm not sure what order they are. Are you going to put these up on the screen? Okay, so that's, this is here. We have a bunch of them. This is how we're trying to help the public and in this packet, they give you live links where if people are interested or think this might be of help, they can tap on and try to get this information. So the first one is Connecticut Small Business Development Centers. A variety of resources for tax breaks, loans and grants have been made available for small businesses, nonprofit organizations, sole proprietors and independent contractors in response to the coronavirus. If you are confused about where to start, you're not alone. We can help. So it has a registration assistance there and this will walk you through it and have live links that you can tap on and it should bring you right to the area for information. It's about a four or five page informational thing. There's going to be a webinar on Tuesday, April 14th from 10:00 AM to 11:00, a Zoom meeting. Donna, if I'm going too fast, just let me know. I'm reading and I wasn't looking at the screen. And on the last page, they have those live links that I was referring to. I'll open it up to the selectmen for comment on this one.
Andy, it's Mark Rivera. We just went through all of these things. It's very confusing. The first time we went on, we got a number of 1,600. When we got to our turn to talk, the phone rang and hung up on us. So it's very difficult to navigate. It's getting a little better. What you see out there is kind of confusing. I'll just give you one example. The 10,000 Small Business Administration grant, you get $1,000 for each employee and nobody knew that until today. So if you're a sole proprietor or you're in business with two or three people, you're only getting 1,000 for each person. So just to give you an idea, we've been talking to all the business people. I went to Troy, we went to Finnegan's. I've been talking to everybody and we're all trying and trying to help each other through it and share our experiences, but everybody's having a tough time with it and there's no money that's gone anywhere yet.
Okay, that's good to know, Mark. Thank you. I know the Wyndham Chamber and Diane Nadeau are working on this on a daily basis. So that's another resource if you want to reach out to her. They have direct contact to some of these.
We called her already too, Andy. She's, she's trying to help.
Okay.
Okay.
Daniel Larson speaking. I agree with Mark. We've been looking into the PPP part of the program, which is employee payroll issues. There's like 17 items that you have to fill out. You really have to get your accountants involved.
Exactly.
It's for, for a small business, it's, it's very daunting. There's not really any way of putting it. It's, it's very daunting and quite literally, they only give you a certain time period to get all the information together and I've heard that the state is basically already out of money. So I don't know what.
You're right. It's locked, it's locked out as of today. We couldn't get back in again. We were just hoping that we got in in time. It was a three-day window. It opened on Monday and it just closed today. Dan, I don't know if you, this may be helpful to everyone. I'll just call it the triple P to make it easy. The bank that you do business with is the bank that you apply to and disseminates the money and our bank here in town, Berkshire and what's the other one in the corner there? Key Bank, they had to register to get in it and they just got into it today and yesterday and Bank of America and Wells Fargo have already handed out $130 billion because they were online the first day and everyone else has been scrambling to apply our little banks around here for our little businesses. So we may have to wait for the second round. We're not sure yet. It's frustrating. I'm done.
Daniel Larson, thank you. Thank you. Okay, is that it? On the Business Spotlight, Andy?
No, that was just the first one.
Okay.
We have the food service update for the public if they're watching. I believe this is being broadcast on a Facebook Live. So the following are options for food services available to Hebron residents if needed during the COVID virus. It lists a bunch of things that we're doing. So once again, this is part of the agenda packet and it'll be up, it's up on our town's webpage. But the Hebron Interface and Human Services, the town's working with Teds that was on the top and the CERT team to provide emergency food supplies to residents. Weekend food bags for students. Both schools are doing lunches, as Mark well knows.
Yes.
We stay in constant contact with H I H S and the food pantry. So far, so good there. They're doing their weekend bags. There's a thing there to donate. Monetary donations are always appreciated and providing a triangle item, I'm sorry, tangible item is preferred here. They list the things that they anticipate running out of. And it states RAM and what the schools are doing. So that's another resource if people need that service that we're doing. I think Hebron was pretty quick at getting this started and we continue to make sure that it's vibrant. All right, I'm out of sequence. Next, if you want, I'll do the Grab, Grab and Go emails. Donna just showed that. So Grab and Go Emergency Mails is updated beginning of March 23rd. We're preparing a third pickup day between 8:00 AM and IM Mondays and Wednesdays and Fridays. We reverse breakfasts and lunches for Hebron students. All children in their households, 18 years and younger, will be available for pickup by a parent or guardian. Pickup locations are the Gilliard Hill School at 580 Gilliard Street. And staff will not be putting meals through an open front window. Please contact Heather Plord with any questions at 860-455-1552. We also, people in town along with, so help put this calendar together. It's an April food resource around ACHM, HAT. So what it is, there's a mobile food share that comes around, the distribution of fresh produce and other grocery items, no questions asked. Attended and received food, the pantry, food pantry that distributes bags or boxes of food directly to those in need who reside in a specific area. This resource was created and over Columbia and Hebron and Marlboro Hunger Action Team on 4/30/20 and there lists a web address if you need more information. But it's a calendar for the month and it tells you where you can go and what times to see what's available. So I think that's a good resource for people that may need these types of items.
Andy, it's Mark. Mark Rivera. Hey, for the fellow selectmen, we've been averaging 150 lunches and breakfasts a day and sometimes we make more than that and almost every day I go to the, the soup kitchen in Willamette and drop off 50 sandwiches or whatever we have left over. We've cut it back to Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays instead of five days a week, which we had just changed this week and we started handing out more food. So there can be a little pause in between and we're not out there every day. So there's some information for you. I'm done.
Dan Larson, Mark, have you heard anything of the quantities that have been going on from Gilliard Hill School?
I don't think they're quite what RAM is, but we all spoke and said, it doesn't matter whether you go to RAM or Hebron, if you just pull up, we're giving you some food. I, I think I'll get those numbers. I've been more in tune with RAM, but I'll go over and check out what they're doing, Dan.
Dan Larson, thank you. It'd be interesting to know just, you know, the totality of the numbers of meals, you know, between the two schools. And, yeah, and if they feel it's, it's working, it sounds like it is, but there's definitely a lot more people out there who may or should or could take advantage of this. I'm not sure what your thoughts are.
Steph, for you, Andy? You want to comment on that?
I hear that RAM's lunches and meals are tastier than Gilliard Hill's. So I think the numbers are up at RAM, but I think they're both being used, maybe not to full capacity, but I think they're definitely helping out a, a need. So I don't have the numbers either, but I know they're, it started off slow, but it's picked up.
It's Mark Rivera. Yeah, Dan, we're, we're really averaging 150 meals a day. Friday, there was only like seven meals left. We handed out close to 200. I think people wanted to grab a couple extra for the weekend. So I, it's, it's really helpful and the people's appreciation is, it makes you feel really good that people are out there trying to do this. I'm done.
Dan Larson, thank you. Andy?
Okay, next up, Donna has on the screen, we're working through EDC and the Town Planner with a local web designer and it's a new website for Hebron Small Business Ads. They're trying to promote local business and she's offered her services at no charge to do this. So it's charlottesvilledesign.com. Thanks to local mom's suggestion, Charlotte Web Design LLC currently offering a free advertising website to support all of our town businesses during this COVID-19 pandemic. It's a one-stop place for residents to find your contact information, hours, website, email addresses and the other information that will be helpful. This website is being advertised through social media, networking groups and word of mouth. So please go to www.hebrensmallbusinesses.com to visit the Hebron Small Businesses website and that's still being developed. So if you go there and it doesn't look like it's full yet, I know I had some conversations with both John Gazinski and Michael Leary, the Town Planner, and they're going to try to work with her during this time. This is where I'm out of. Next up is EverSource. We've got this from our representative, Pat Bens, sent this over. EverSource Foundation Donates More Than $2 Million to Support Communities During the COVID-Virus Pandemic. This is for nonprofit organizations in Connecticut, Massachusetts and New Hampshire. I've already sent this over to AHM and a few others. They gladly accepted it and they're looking through it to see if this is something that applies to them or it's something they could actually obtain. So this is also going to be posted where people can come and look at this if they need this type of service for nonprofits in town. I messed one of these up. I got one of these apart. That's going to haunt me all night now. Like a duplicate, that's why. Here we go. Coronavirus Emergency Loan Small Business Guides and Checklist. I don't know if this is something that you looked into, Mark, as well, but this is through the U.S. Chamber of Commerce. Is this what you were referring to earlier?
Yeah, there's three now. So that's the third one. We haven't looked into that one as much.
Okay, what I'm willing to do is, I'm sure there's going to be more coming down the line. We're having daily conversations with the governor and his support team every other day. Today's got canceled, but he was dealing with the schools apparently. But as these come down the pipe, we'll continue to post these on our website. So keep a lookout for these types of things. And once again, the Chamber of Commerce is trying to be an advocate and steering small businesses and trying to assist in getting this type of help. Thanks.
Andy, Peter Casper. Mark, did you, I just saw one come over before the meeting started on loans for minority and women-owned businesses. Is that one of the ones you looked into as well?
Well, I did look. Okay, Mark. Jessica was just on an hour-long webinar with Suzanne Byselwitz and her staff and they're going to provide some funding for minorities.
I turned the mic on.
Women-owned businesses. Can you hear me?
Okay.
Yes.
All right. I owe you. Thank you.
So I just was, I don't know if, Andy, I, maybe this doesn't help, but I've just been in touch with, because she's a Hebron resident, she's Director of the Department of Commerce and she had given me a lot of these links and we have another Hebron resident who's in charge of Southern New England. So I don't know if contacting them and seeing if they can provide some additional insight, the additional, additional resource may be more readily available because they're, you know, very much in the middle of this as well. I don't, I don't want to overstep, but she was very forthcoming in a lot of the links and just sent me that a few minutes ago about the women and minority loan. So I can reach out if there's any benefit to that. It's totally up to you.
I, I know those two people you're speaking about personally. The avenue is, as I continue to broadcast, it's through the Chamber of Commerce. They're working directly through Diane. Diane has her direct contact information and that's how we've been dispersing that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So that was quite a bit of stuff, but it's there for the people that need it and it's unfortunate to hear what Mark's saying he's run into already, but they'll continue to update. I know they're working to try to get more assistance out there. So we'll keep everybody posted.
Daniel Larson, Andy, the, our town economic development coordinator is also the resource that, you know, the businesses here in town could use. I believe all that information is on the website and/or people were to call in, you know, to the town office building, that information can be disseminated out to them also, at least places where to try to go.
Absolutely. I'm working with John. John's working with Diane from the Chamber. So we got a pretty good network right there for these types of things and we kind of stay in touch and we don't want to be too repetitive on the same stuff, but as it comes down the pipe from the feds or from the state, we get together on it and we send it out.
Okay, Dan Larson. So are we set to move on?
Yes.
Okay, again, Dan Larson speaking. Our next section is Appointment and Resignations and we have a zoning board of appeals appointment and an open space land acquisition committee appointment. The first appointment is, we have received a letter from James Petrosa expressing his interest in being appointed as a regular member of the zoning boards of appeals. He currently serves as an alternate. I will read the motion and ask if anyone has anything they want to state on that. So the motion is move the Hebron Board of Selectmen to appoint James Petrosa as a regular member of the zoning board of appeals for a term to run until November 16th, 2021. Open it up for discussion.
Dan, this is Peter Casper. I've known Jim for a long time, probably in excess of 15 years. Terrific individual of the highest caliber and I wholeheartedly am encouraged by this and look forward to his continued involvement. So I would strongly support this.
Daniel Larson speaking. Anyone else? Anyone else? Hearing none. All in favor of the proposed motion, sing with your name and then I. So calling for Vice Chair Richmond. Peter Casper?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark Revota?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And John Collins?
John Collins, aye.
Daniel Larson, aye. Motion is passed unanimously. Next is the, Dan Larson again, open space land acquisition committee appointment. Attached is correspondence from Brian O'Connell expressing his interest in being appointed as a citizen at large on the open space land acquisition committee. There is no term for these positions. So the motion is move that Brian O'Connell be appointed as a citizen at large on the open space land acquisition committee. That being said, I will again open it up for comments.
John Collins, we're lucky to have him.
Peter Casper, I concur. He's a terrific asset. So this is wonderful to see.
This is Gail Richmond speaking. Brian has certainly contributed a lot to that body for several, several years and I think he'll be a great asset to join them again.
Dan Larson, I concur. Serving with him on the Board of Selectmen was nothing but an honor. His knowledge, his insight, pardon me, and his knowledge and insight on open space land acquisition has been incredible. So the proposed motion, going down the list to a different this time. Mark Rivera?
Rivera, aye.
Gail Richmond? Say Gail Richmond. Peter Casper?
Peter Casper, aye.
John Collins?
John Collins, aye.
And Dan Larson, aye. Motion made and carried. Thank you very much for those people who have volunteered or stepping forward. My next thing will be Town Manager's Report.
Okay, under the Town Manager's Report, first thing is correspondence. Donna, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I'm looking at the Facebook Live broadcast and maybe it's me, the only one that shows visible is myself. Everybody else is dark. It could be my device. I'm not sure.
My picture was up and then it went and, Dan Larson speaking, and this is a problem we'll work out later.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to let that be known. I just, I'm getting a comment and I can see myself. I'm not sure if that's what everybody else sees. This is on the Facebook Live, not on the go-to meeting. Okay, so in the correspondence, that's, the first one's from the Connecticut Water Company. It was in your packet. It's up on the screen. They're looking to start an advisory council and they're looking for a representative from the 59 towns that they represent. Connecticut Waters established a customer advisory council to enhance communications with our customers and communities. They would like a representative from each of the 59 towns that we serve. The CAC member will be looked to consult and advise on matters of local interest. So I'll stop right there. I don't think I need to read the whole thing and you don't have to make a decision tonight, but if it's okay, we'll keep this for the next Selective's meeting and if anybody has any thoughts on who would be a good representative for the town of Hebron in this capacity, we'll accept, you know, suggestions.
Okay, Dan Larson. Again, Dan Larson, that makes sense to me. People again who Okay, Dan Larson. Again, Dan Larson, that makes sense to me. People again who are, would express an interest on this should again get their information into the town so that it can be, can be looked at.
Thank you, Dan. And the Facebook Live has now been corrected. Good job, Donna. Next in the correspondence is the report from Troop K. And as John Collins always states, there's very low incidences. Thank God. That's in your packet. I hope everybody has that. So that's continuing to be good news. And that was it for correspondence.
Andy, Peter Casper, maybe Mark could comment. I mean, how are we doing with the parks and the, and the patrolling of the parks and the schools relative to kids deciding to not congregate? We haven't continually have issues there. I just wanted to hear some feedback on that, maybe from Mark or whomever. I mean, obviously no arrests, but just connectivity, yeah.
Andy and I and the administration at Ram have been talking and figuring things out. We had to lock the tennis courts because they were kind of having parties down there. We had to lock, we closed the parking lots. We've left the track open because we don't want to punish the grownups for the kids making bad decisions. But the kids are getting better, and it's still, I think, going to be an ongoing thing to have to go and tell them that they can't be close to each other. You can't congregate. But there, it's the same group of kids usually to Pete, but a lot of kids are being pretty good about it. But we're going to continue to have problems. We're breaking up basketball games every day. And I think that's just what's going to happen. As far as crime, we, it's really, things have slowed down, and we're kind of just, just waiting for something to happen, I guess, for lack of a better way of saying it.
Peter Casper, thank you, Mark. Appreciate it.
Dan Larson, I heard that there was a auto theft, want to say in the Lake area or something? I'm not sure where now.
Yeah, it was. It was on one of the roads between Deep Woods and.
Again, a reminder, people, you need to lock your cars. You need to think smart. There are people that will either try to take advantage of the events that are going on, whether it's trying to scam money out of you, or, you know, they'll still try to steal stuff, whatever. You, you need to protect yourselves. And you need to let, again, Troop K, let our police know, let the town know when things happen. You know, there was an event on next door Hebron, and I was going to bring it up under the end section where people are finding dead squirrels. And so DEP is now asking that if people are finding dead squirrels in their yards, not in the road, but, you know, in their yards, to notify DEP. I don't know what the extent is, if they are thinking it is related to this COVID. I don't know. But I know Willie has been apprised of it, and, you know, but people need to let, you know, the proper agencies and town and state know when things that are happening are just out of place.
Okay. All right. So underneath the town manager's report, unfortunately, as of today, we have seven residents that tested positive in Hebron. On a, on another note, a good note, as the Board of Selectmen knows, Fire Chief Nick Wallach had submitted a letter of resignation to be effective July 1. Due to the situation that we're in, he has rescinded that and is willing to stay on board until further notice. So I really appreciate him doing that at this time of need. Hopefully, the community appreciates it as well. I'm sure they do. I continue to work with the department heads and the public, as Mark just stated, and Peter just asked, on issues and with town businesses. We've had a lot of work with the golf courses to try to make sure that they're compliant. Chadam Health has been out there with guidelines. He's hired people to even be in the parking lots to make sure there's no congregating. It continues to stay open for recreation. So things like that are, you may not know about, it take up a lot of time, but there's been a lot of go between, between the state and the town hall and then the business owners. As Mark stated, we've been monitoring the play areas and the trails. We're starting to get more complaints as they're being heavily used. People are concerned about the social distancing, so we have had the police patrols out there. And as stated, we're not arresting anybody by any means. We're just giving them advice on how to stay safe at this point. There was some complaints of dirt bikes and quads, so we're keeping an eye out for them as well. We will just, if catch them, request them to, you know, please abide by the rules. It's continuous basis, talking with the department heads. Paul Bancroft, our emergency management director, keeping the safety supplies for everybody that needs it. The town clerk's office, the town hall, we're still dealing with some of the public, even though the buildings are closed, sorting the mail, tax office, things of that nature. So we continue to make sure that everybody has what they need to be safe and to conduct the business to try to help the residents. Still working with Ram on the DOT project for the campus improvements. Hopefully, I've been back and forth with DOT. We're going to see something next week where we can sign off and award that bid finally. So that'll be great. As you can see, we keep training on these GoToMeetings and meeting protocols, and now we're luckily broadcasting this on Facebook Live, so we can keep as much as the public informed now that they don't have the ability to come in and assemble at an actual location for the meetings. On a good note, they're looking to have a parade at Colebrook Village this Sunday from 11:00 to 11:30. Car parade. The Board of Selectmen are invited. I think they're going to invite the fire department. They're going to have a slow drive around for the people that are quarantined or in there and don't have much going on. They're going to do, organize a parade. So Scott Kaufman sent that out to me today and asked me to extend the invitation to the Board of Selectmen. Once again, that's Sunday from 11:00 to 11:30. We're working on the bonding project for the sewers. There's a lot of stuff that goes into that. That's ready to go out there in front of the Conservation Commission tonight. They're having a meeting at the same time as we are. And then from there, it goes to planning a zoning for finalization, and then it's going to go out to bid. So we're moving forward with that. But we're going to probably push that project out just a couple of months due to this situation as well. And that's pretty much it, because we've been dealing nothing but just what we're being dealt with here today. Everything's Corona and, and the new executive orders that come down from the governor's office. There was even a new one this afternoon that modifies a little bit about the tax deferment that we are going to discuss later on in this budget.
Andy's John Collins. Anybody at Colebrook Village, have they gotten the virus?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
No, I, I don't have that as listed. It's, I don't believe so.
Or the senior, in senior housing or anything like that.
Once again.
Andy's correct, John. I checked the, we have a board that we list everything on at the fire department. We haven't had one at senior housing yet.
Okay, thank you.
Or Colebrook Village.
Okay. Well, at least that's good news.
It is.
Okay, getting into old business. I guess the first is our Maple Festival update.
Yeah, so as, this is uncharted waters for everything now as we go through this. As some of you may know, some of you may not know, the governor came out with a new extension on two areas. One for the schools, I think it's May 20. And also, that extends the nonessential businesses to May 20 as well. So that just came out this afternoon. With that being said, I'll have a conversation with Diane Nadeau in the very near future. The Maple Fest was rescheduled for Saturday and Sunday, May 9th and 10th. Not knowing at the time that we did this, how long this pandemic was going to last. But I would think now with the governor's new orders, that's kind of how we follow suit. So I'll be talking with her, and I think we'll have an announcement shortly of that.
Dan Larson, again, next up, well, actually, that's, that's it for old business unless anyone else has anything else that they want to discuss under old business. Okay, hearing none. Again, Dan Larson, moving on, new business. And the first we have is the fire department waiver. This is something that we, as the Board of Selectmen, have done many times when it comes to the fire department. When I was fire chief, I had asked for bid waivers. The reason is, is that there are so few companies that, that A, deal with fire apparatus on repairs, and many of those companies are brand specific. So this is not anything that is out of the ordinary when it comes to, to fire apparatus. What I'll do is I'll read the motion, then I'll let everybody chime in if they desire, and go from there. Again, make sure we give our initials or our names. So the motion is move that in accordance to the town of Hebron purchasing policy, the Board of Selectmen approve the request of waiver for the bid process for the refurbishment work on ET 310. So hearing the motion, I open it up to the floor.
Mark Rivera, I think it's a good course of action to take.
Gail Richmond, I think we need to do this.
This is Peter Casper. I agree. Just remind me what the cost of, of this project is? I don't remember.
Hold on.
I didn't see it.
It's on the screen.
I do not have.
If I could, if I could just jump in at this time, if that's appropriate?
Yes, please.
What this is, is, this is the reason we put that clause in the Hebron, Town of Hebron's purchasing policies. Normally, when we go out to bid for services or a product, we're looking at something new or a specific service. This is a fire truck that we already own and we're having refurbished. This gives the chief or the members of the committee on this truck a little bit of leeway as they get into it to say what gets replaced and what doesn't, if not needed. If this were to go out to a specific bid, they would spend all the money, whether the work was needed or not. So they didn't want to circumvent the Hebron purchasing policy, but this is a clear reason of why the clause is in there for the Board of Selectmen to waive it, because you can't really spec out used equipment, or it's hard to spec out some sort of refurbishment type of work when you really don't know what you're getting into until you get into it.
Daniel Larson, any other comments? Hearing none. Move for a vote. Again, we'll go down. Mark Rivera?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Gail Richmond?
Aye.
Peter Casper?
Peter Casper, aye.
John Collins?
John Collins, aye.
Dan Larson, aye. Thank you. Next is the sale of the 2008 E-450 ambulance. Attached is a request from Chief Wallach regarding the sale of the recently replaced 2008 ambulance. The Eighth Utilities District of Manchester, Connecticut, is offering $9,700 for the purchase of the ambulance. The used ambulance was offered for auction at govdeals.com, but offers did not meet the reserve. Chief Wallach and the town manager are recommending the Selectmen approve the sale to the Eighth Utilities District. So the motion is move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the sale of the 2008 E-450 ambulance to the Eighth Utilities District of Manchester, Connecticut, in the amount of $9,700, and authorize Andrew J. Terney, town manager, to sign any necessary documents.
Gail Richmond here. It was out there for auction. We didn't get anything for it. This is $9,700. I think we should grab it.
Peter Casper, what was the reserve?
Peter, it was $10,000, but because of that amount, the threshold in Manchester, they would have to go through a bunch of formalities. So if they come in at 9.7, it could be a direct sale. So I waived the $300. The only other, the only other bid we got through GovDeals was right around $8,000.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't know the reserve was $20,000. I have no idea. So thank you.
No, that's a good question.
Okay, hearing no one else. Dan Larson speaking. I'll call for the vote. Mark Rivera?
Aye.
Gail Richmond?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter Casper?
Peter Casper, aye.
John Collins?
John Collins, aye.
Dan Larson, aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Again, Dan Larson, the next thing we have is our COVID-19 resolution pertaining to a modified budget calendar.
So I don't know if anybody wants to discuss what we're proposing before we get into this. For the public, so with the, I'll just take a stab at it. With the governor's, governor's executive order, due to the coronavirus, they don't want any in place, or person in place voting. So the executive order gives that ability to the, the bodies in the towns, like the regional school can pass, the board can pass their budget, which is approximately 74% of the total budget. And then that leaves the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance, the approvals to pass without having an in place vote. After talking to the attorneys and weighing our options, one of the things we could have waited, we could have pushed it out till June, but in talking with the registered voters, they still have a primary, even though Bernie Sanders has dropped out, the primary is still alive and well, unless he sends a letter to every state and district. And the gentleman out in California has not conceded. So as of right now, the primary is still on for that day. We, in consultations with the registered voters, aren't really set up to do that with the personnel and the machines and everything we need to do that day. And knowing that 74.5% of the budget would have already been passed by the Ram Board, it doesn't make a lot of financial sense. One of the other things that we probably could have done is a paper ballot, but once again, with the majority of the budget already being passed and handed down to the now, the towns, that number's not going to change. So I think on the side of safety, Ram is going to vote on the 20th, and we'll have those numbers. That gives the three towns, we had a conference call, and we all agreed to give it two weeks for the towns to look at their budgets, to try to come in the best that they can. I know it won't change the Ram numbers, but I've talked to the other two towns. They may change their budgets to lighten the financial or tax impact on their residents. So they wanted a full two weeks for the public to have that time to comment, seeing we're doing virtual meetings. I agreed to that, and that's kind of how we came up with the schedule. It's in conjunction with Ram's calendar and then the other two towns. It's in conjunction with Ram's calendar and then the other two towns.
Dan Larson, looking it's over. So I, looking at the, yes, the revised, revised draft proposal as of March 30th. It was showing Monday, April 20th as a virtual meeting. You're saying that they are now going to plan on going to approve the budget that night?
They very well could. If they need another meeting, they'll have one directly right after. But they're thinking they might wrap up their business on the 20th.
Are they going to, again, Dan Larson, are they going to somehow get out to the voters exactly what they are calling for? I know our budget numbers have changed and in a very positive direction for, for our taxpayers. But I have not heard anything on Ram's numbers. And since that is really the, the big budget driver for the three towns, I'm not sure how it can get out there, but I urge them to somehow let the taxpayers know how they are, how they are, you know, protecting the people that actually cough up the money. So I, I, I'll open it up to the floor to have other people's thoughts and input.
This is Andy, once again, before we jump in, I've had conversations with some of the board members as late as yesterday. And I know there's at least sort of consensus to go back in and lower the budget even more than what's being proposed or shown on our front sheet that I sent out to you. I think it was last, I sent it earlier this week. But they're going to try to get as close to a zero as they can. And I applaud them for doing that. If they can pull that off, that's great news. I was on the phone with the finance people from Andover yesterday, having conversations regarding that. Couple of the representatives from Hebron that sit on that board. So we'll have to wait and see. They're going to have an email address where people can send in comments. I'm going to ask Pat to send that to this and we'll send that out as well. But I, I think they, and what's going on in, in the world, I think they're, and what they affect us on the other two towns, I think they know they have to try to do the best they can. So I'm hearing they're going to modify that even more.
Thank you, Dan Larson. Other members?
This is Peter Casper. I had gotten a couple of questions and I know this doesn't necessarily impact the current budget, but just wondering how we're communicating relative to the question of that. Obviously with schools closed, there's going to be a certain amount of expenses that will vary. And some of it, you know, obviously some of it's locked, most of it's locked in by contract, but there's still a significant amount of expenses that wouldn't necessarily be incurred with the bill, with the schools closed. And that could show up at a later date, you know, in terms of having some excess dollars relative to the originally proposed budget. Is there any conversation around that? Because obviously I know that wouldn't be necessarily a budget issue. But ultimately, the question was raised, is there going to be additional monies that could be returned to the town over time because of some savings either at the Ram level or at the Hebron level?
Mark Rivera. Peter, I talked with Scott Leslie, if not daily, every other day. And just to give you an example, they are not going to have a graduation in this calendar year. So that would be a savings, but they're going to try to have a graduation in August if they can at the Lions Fairgrounds. So they can't really put that on next year's budget. So that would be something that they could save, but they really do want to have a graduation. So most things, you're right, they just have to pay for it and keep going. I mean, I, I talked to the board members too. They, they want to cut the budget with things like just forego landscaping at this time, not fix the outfield at the baseball field, a few other things. And that would bring them to zero. They just have to agree to it.
Gail Richmond, I think there's things right here in town. That the Hebron Board of Ed, there are expenses because of the fact that the youngsters are learning at home and the other things that they're doing to try to provide for the children. So I don't know how much of those savings we're going to see as time marches on.
I can jump in on that. To answer Peter's question directly, this is day by day. So let me give you a couple of examples. We're not running the buses. In the contract, it says if we don't run the buses, we don't have to pay the contract. But we're hearing there's going to be an executive order from the governor to make us pay a portion of that just to try to keep them solvent. Along the lines of municipalities, they don't want us furloughing or laying people off because that's just putting more hurt into the economy. So what you think we may have to save is fuel, for instance. If we're not running the buses, we're not burning the fuel. But that contract, we purchased the fuel to get a reduced price and lock us in. We paid 70 or 75% of that upfront. So we're not going to see a lot of savings in that. We're going to have a lot of diesel fuel that we own that we're probably not going to be able to use. So we're dealing with this stuff as it comes up every day. I'm talking to both superintendents on, on some of these issues. It could be some savings in electricity. It could be some savings in heating, some other outside contracting that normally would go on if they were in school that they're not. So every day we, we try to find ways where we could put pen to paper and write down a number that we think is going to be a savings. But it's such a moving target with all these unforeseen's that it's hard to nail it down exactly at this time.
Hey, Peter Casper, thank you.
So getting back to the schedule, we worked very hard. I know there's going to be some people within the community that aren't happy that they're not going to be able to vote on the budget. I think as what we just explained with Ram, and we're hoping that the board, the local Board of Ed can give us maybe a little bit more help as well. We're trying to get that down not only to a reduced mill rate, but a zero tax increase. And if we do that, I think that would be more palatable for the residents, the residents to understand why the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance would move forward in these unprecedented times under the executive order. We really don't have a lot of options other than prolong it. But it, it doesn't make, you know, it's not common sense to do that when 75% of the budget is going to be approved already. And it would hold up auditing, it would hold up tax bills going out. It would, it would affect a lot of things. The other thing we could probably do is carry the same number from last year to this year and wait till we have a referendum. But we're looking to go below. So it would be an increase. So I think if everybody gets the facts on what we're finally going to end, end up with and propose, I think it'll be palatable.
This is Peter Casper. I think that's very well thought out, Andy. I, I appreciate that. And I think the, the comment about if we can have that zero impact, I think it would, it would obviously make it a lot easier to sort of understand, for the public to understand and appreciate. So I think that's, it's a good way to look at it. And if we can do it effectively and quickly, like we're doing it within the directive of the governor and not have the tax impact, I think the, the taxpayers would appreciate that. So I think that's well thought out. Thank you.
I think the, the well thought out modified budget that Andy and his office put out is it does allow for the public to see what is happening, what is doing. They can tune into our meetings. They can go out on the website. So I think there's, and there's an email address to them to voice their opinions. So I think we're, we're giving them opportunities, although we would all prefer a referendum, but we are giving them opportunities to know what is going on and how their tax dollars will be spent.
Dan Larson, the, the paper that is on the screen is showing what is right now being proposed. And again, that is right now. And they are looking at a mill rate of 36.76. Our current mill rate, I'd asked and gotten this information from Donna today, is 37.05. So that is over a point to what, to five to eight reduction right there. So, you know, I think, I think this is something that we can be very proud of and pleased with. You know, it, it is definitely going in the direction that the taxpayers want to see it go in. I only throw out two thoughts, and I don't think that tonight we really want to get into discussing it. But one thought is, do we want to try to take maybe a piece of that and start a fund for vehicle replacement? These are things that we have talked about literally for all the years I've been on the board. You know, and we've never had the, the funny, the funds, the economics to be able to do it. You know, just something to think about. Do we want to try to maybe split the difference and try to get going some of the things that we say we really should have, but have never had any ability to do? So, and I just wanted to throw that out. So it's.
So to clarify what Danny said prior, I just want to make, make sure Danny was right. Donna gave him the right information. So we're presently at 37.05 for a mill rate this year. What I have on the sheet today, and we're hoping that's going to change and even go lower, is 36, I'm sorry, 36.76. That's a 0.49 or almost a half a mil reduction next year from this year. And if Ram comes through and if we can get the proposed Board of Ed's budget to be reduced a little bit more, I think we could come in with a zero or less tax increase. And that's what we're trying to shoot for in these times, if that's what the Board of Select, the Board of Finance want to approve.
I think we need to remember or be, remind the public that this will be the second year in a row in which their mill rate has decreased. It was decreased last year. So it makes, makes everything a little more palatable.
So I think we don't, you know, we, we all know people and we know things are bad. People's businesses are basically on, on hold at, at best, although a lot of people with businesses don't know if they'll even survive this. So a lot of people are hurting. Everybody knows that, not just, not just the threat of the virus, but also, I mean, economically, this is just devastating. And I, I think it's great that we're reducing the budget, reducing the mill rate. I just think that sends a powerful signal and it helps people out. And the, the more that we can do, the, the best. I hope Ram comes down. I hope we can do a little bit better. And I just want to thank everybody else, all the board members for this. This is, I think, a really significant achievement. Over and out.
It's Mark Rivera. I think it's really important that we let the people know that we're, we're a thoughtful and empathetic government. And in these times, we can't think about getting things that really aren't necessary, but just get the job done and that we, we have to deliver them some kind of reduction or at least zero. That's, that's my feeling. I feel strongly about that. I'm done.
Peter Casper, Andy, so just to make sure I understand the, a reduction in the mill rate doesn't necessarily equate to a, a reduction in your tax impact or from last year, right? It's, it has to be at a certain level to have it be a net zero?
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's not quite apples for apples. We, we still have to, to get a zero tax increase, it's still a little bit more to go.
We got more to go, right. So I would just agree with everybody else. If we can get it to that, to that zero, which would then require the mill rate to come down a little bit more than what's being proposed, that would be a wonderful target. So good work on, on what we've seen so far. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. If, if Ram comes through with what they're hoping to come through with, and then if we get any type of assistance with the requests at the regular Board of Ed, if there's any movement there with them or when the Board of Finance reviews that, that could reduce it to almost three quarters of a mil, which would get us to a zero tax increase.
So could you provide a little more, Peter Casper, could you provide a little more insight in the discussions with the Hebron Board of Ed in terms of you, you know, you're saying that they're, they're looking at it. Do you have any more specifics on what they're looking at or what they're targeting or anything?
No, I haven't had a talk with them. I'm hoping when, when the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen have their budget reviews and they can see what we've done, what, what Ram is proposing to do, that we reach out to them and just simply ask the question, if there's anything more in their budget, they could help us out to get to where we need to blow, to blow that 1% to move forward in the fashion that we want to. And then we're going to get into tax deferrals and stuff later on in the, in the budget as well.
Peter Casper, thank you.
I just. Go ahead.
Dan, I just wanted, I just want to note that, that may, that, that it's listed, it says Ram's got their meeting on the 20th. But then we listed the April 21st meeting for the town office. That's a budget workshop, Board of Selectmen. That's only if you need that meeting. So we leave it on the, on the schedule and you're going to approve it, but we may not need that. I just want to make sure you see that capitalized underneath there.
Yes, yeah. Okay, I, I say my thing is to make sure that people, people know when the Ram discussion is going to be held so that they can weigh in. You know, I don't want to have people miss it saying, oh, I didn't know what happened. And then wake up finding out that it's a said and done deal. So it's just, I just want to make sure that, you know, it gets out there every possible way when these discussions are being had so that, you know, people can, can express their feelings. Okay, moving forward, again, Dan Larson, I'm going to read this resolution pertaining to a modified calendar for the fiscal year 2020, 2021, general and capital fund budgets authorized by executive orders 2020 dash 7B, 7C, and 7I. And bear with me because it's three pages.
Maybe four. Can we just refer to, this is John Collins. We can't refer to, to this agenda item instead of reading it?
Yeah. I think we're supposed to read it.
We've always read them in the past, but I, I, I don't have that answer. I don't know if we can refer to the document or not. I don't want to say that and not know the answer because we've always read them.
I would suggest that we read them. That way there is no discrepancies in, in following proper protocol.
Okay.
I understand, especially since I'm the one reading it. I agree. Whereas on March 10th, 2020, the governor of the state of Connecticut, Governor declared a public health emergency and civil preparedness emergency for the state of Connecticut pursuant to the general, Connecticut general statutes, section 19 small a, dash 131 and 28, dash nine in response to the global pandemic of COVID-19 disease associated with a novel coronavirus that is currently affecting multiple countries and states. And whereas on March 13th, 2020, the President of the United States, President, declared a national emergency to combat the coronavirus that is currently infecting the population of the United States. And whereas the effects of the transmission of COVID-19 has resulted in the spread of infections in Connecticut and throughout the country, as well as resulting in shortages of personal protective equipment and other supplies that could jeopardize public safety and civil preparedness. And whereas in response to the issuance of declarations of a public health emergency and civil preparedness emergency by the governor, he issued a series of executive orders setting for the law governing the conduct of the business of state and municipal government during the period of the emergency. Whereas on March 14th, 2020, the governor. Whereas on March fourteenth, two thousand twenty, the governor issued executive order number seven, capital B, parentheses E O seventy, paragraph one, of which suspends all statute better provisions, ordinances, and regulations mandating open meetings in order to permit any public agency to meet and take such actions authorized by the law without permitting or requiring in-person public access to such meetings, and to hold such meetings or proceedings remotely by conference call, video conference, or other technology, electronic meetings in parentheses. And whereas E O, executive order seven, capital B, sets forth the following requirements for electronic meetings. The public has the ability to view or listen to each meeting or proceeding in real time by telephone, video, or other technology. Any such meeting or proceeding is recorded or transcribed, and that such recording or transcript shall be posted on the agency's website within seven days of the meeting or proceeding, and made available within a reasonable time in the agency's office. The required notice and agenda for each meeting or proceeding is posted on the agency's website and shall include information about how the meeting will be conducted and how the public can access it. Any materials relevant to matters on the agenda, including but not limited to materials related to specific applications, if applicable, shall be submitted to the agency a minimum of twenty-four hours prior and posted to the agency's website for public inspection prior to, during, and after the meeting. And any exhibits to be submitted by members of the public shall, to the extent feasible, also be submitted to the agency a minimum of twenty-four hours prior to the meeting and posted to the agency's website for public inspection prior to, during, and after the meeting. And all speakers taking part in such meeting or proceeding shall clearly state their name and title, if applicable, before speaking on each occasion that they speak. And whereas on March fifteenth, two thousand twenty, the governor issued executive order number seven, capital C, paragraph five, parentheses E O C, of which extended all budget deadlines for the preparation of the municipal budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, that falls on any date prior to and including May fifteenth, two thousand twenty, are extended by thirty days. Whereas E O seven C permits the Board of Selectmen to alter or modify the schedules and deadlines pertaining to the preparation as submitted and submission of a proposed budget and the deliberation or actions on said budget, including any required public hearings, publication referendum, or final budget adapt, adoption. And whereas seven, or E O seven C proposed, postpones all submission dates set forth in the Charter of the Town of Hebron Code or its Code of Ordinances until such time as the Board of Selectmen approves that modified schedule and deadline consisted with thirty-day extension. And whereas on March twenty-first, two thousand twenty, the governor issued executive order number seven I, paragraph thirteen, parentheses E O seven I, which, of which dispenses with any in-person voting requirements, including referenda and town meeting, town meetings requiring in-person votes for the purposes of adopting the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one fiscal year municipal budgets and setting the mill rate, thereby conferring final responsibility on the budget-making authority of the town to adopt a budget and set a mill rate. Whereas the Board of Finance is the budget-making authority for the town of Hebron. And whereas executive orders seven C and seven I do not alter or modify the control of line items that fall squarely within the authority of the Board of Education budget. And thus, the Board of Education should comply with all submission requirements pertaining to budget deadlines adopted by the municipality. And now therefore, be it hereby resolved pursuant to paragraph five of executive order seven C, the Board of Selectmen hereby sets forth the following modified schedule and deadline for the submission, deliberation, and final action on the town budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, which meetings shall be conducted in accordance with the requirements noticed in accordance with executive order seven B, one. And then in here, we have March third, two thousand twenty, I'm not sure if I need to read this.
Yeah.
Okay, moving up to current time, April fourteenth, two thousand twenty, virtual meeting, budget workshop with the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. At seven to eight will be the miscellaneous general government, eight, eight thirty, revenues, overview, and discussion, budget deliberations, eight thirty to nine thirty, approximately finalize the Selectmen's fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget. April twenty-first, two thousand twenty, tentative virtual meeting, budget workshop with the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance, seven P M. If desired by the boards, a virtual meeting will be held to conduct a continued budget workshop. April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty, virtual meeting, Board of Finance, seven P M, establish the recommended town budget. May fifth, two thousand twenty, virtual meeting, Board of Finance, seven P M, public hearing on proposed budget. May thirteenth, two thousand twenty, virtual meeting, Board of Finance, seven P M, approve final budget and set the mill rate. Twenty, ten more pages to go, no. A meeting regarding the budget of the regional school district eight, parentheses RAM, is expected to be held on April twenty, two thousand twenty. However, any meeting schedule regarding the regional school budget will be set by the RAM Board of Education and are not subject to this resolution. Now further, thou therefore be it further resolved pursuant to paragraph thirteen of executive order seven I. The provisions of the Charter are hereby suspended for the deliberations pertaining to the adoption of the town budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, and that the Board of Finance, the budget-making authority for the town of Hebron, shall adopt the fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget and set the mill rate in accordance with the schedule set forth herein. Now for, thou therefore be it further resolved pursuant to paragraph one of executive order seven, capital B. The Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen and the Town of Hebron shall comply with all requirements pertaining to notice, including but not limited to notice and posting on the website of the Town of Hebron all submission items at least twenty-four hours prior to the public meeting for which the item has been submitted or shall be considered. And then this is in testimony whereof, we hereunto set our hand and caused the seal of the Town of Hebron to be affixed the ninth day of April, two thousand twenty. And that will be us, the Board of Selectmen. Now, question on this, do we need to come in and sign a form? Or how is this going to get back to you? Or can we all sign in our individual forms and drop off at the town hall? Or can they be scanned and emailed in?
Now, we'll supply a document where everybody can sign the same one. We'll have to put it in an area where you can come, be, be at the drop box in the front of town hall, and we'll set up a time that works for everybody, and it could be throughout the course of a business day, the next business day, next Monday. And if you can make the time to come in and sign it, and then it'll be complete. But we should have one document with everybody's signature on one.
Okay. Will you get that out to us in an email that day? Or are we just going to say it will be Monday?
If Monday works, the next business day, seeing it's, we're out tonight. If everybody can agree to at some point in the next business day, which would be Monday, making a point to stop by town hall, we'll have this available.
Yeah. Yeah, Dan Larson, I will be there. Others?
Mark Rivera, I'll be there.
Peter Casper, I'll be there.
Gail Richmond, I will be there.
John Collins, likewise.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay. Next is our contract for the Hebron Elementary School Water Project Clerk of the Works.
Yes. We have Mel on the line if there's any questions on this, but this is pretty straightforward. It was drawn up by the town attorney, reviewed by and approved from the building committee. The gentleman came through, highly recommended, it has some depth in his company. So, we felt he was the most appropriate person to have employed in this position for this job to look out for the town's best interest.
Okay, I gotta read the motion and then open it up to my colleagues. Dan Larson. Move to the Hebron Board of Selectmen confirm authorization for Andrew J. Tierney, town manager, to enter into agreement between owner and consultant with Mark M. Fitzgerald of Mark M. Fitzgerald Construction LLC to serve as clerk of the works for the Hebron Elementary School Water Remediation Project as outlined in the agreement. Open it up to my fellow colleagues.
Peter Casper, if, if all goes well, how long do we expect to employ this individual? I don't remember the timeline, I just want to be.
The budget is, is based on ten weeks.
Okay.
Mel, just let them know who's talking, there's people that may not know you're online.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mel Lighter, Chairman of the Building Committee and also Vice Chair of the Board of Finance.
Peter Casper, thank you, Mel.
You're welcome.
Dan Larson, again, Mel, did you want to give any kind of, or Andy, any kind of a quick update as to progress that has been made?
I'll do something, I'll do something real quickly. I've handed this project over to Mel's capable hands, and he's done an excellent job for me, considering everything else we have done. So, I defer to him, and he consults with me every day, and I really appreciate it, and he should get kudos for the job him and that committee is doing, but I have him running it completely.
The company has been there since the, I think it's the twenty-third of March. Currently, they've installed all of the mains, they're now poking into the classrooms. The piping in the, in the ceilings is all insulated. The issue that we come into is very soon they will need to get into asbestos abatement and, and such. My thoughts, and it went out to both the contractor and to superintendent schools and the chairman of the Board of Ed, is that between now and the, and the twentieth of May, when they are potentially scheduled to come back, it's almost six weeks, they've been there for almost four. They were only going to have eight weeks during the summer. So, I've asked the contractor and the, the folks who were, are, yeah, are, are design professionals to get together, come up with a timeline, be prepared to present it to the superintendent and get a go-ahead or a no-go. You know, to go forward and, and start doing some major demolition in there. The, and the decision is purely the superintendent and the Board of Ed's decision, whether we go or we don't. If we don't go, we will lose the workers and they'll be off to other things. And we'll still have the summer to complete it. So, that, I'm sorry for the long-windedness, but that's, that's about where we are right now.
Dan Larson, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Any other comments, questions? Again, Dan Larson, my hat's off to you. It sounds that you're making fantastic progress, and it's great to hear. And, you know, it would be great if, if they could just move on ahead and get this thing wrapped up. But at any rate, that, that would be my, my thought on it. So, any other comments?
Their desire also, they would love to stay and finish it, and I think, I think they've got a good chance of doing it.
Thank you. Okay, Mark Rivera.
Hi. Or do you ask me if I have any comments, or are we voting on the motion?
We're voting on the motion.
Mark Rivera, aye.
Gail Richmond?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter Casper?
Peter Casper, aye.
John Collins?
John Collins, aye.
Dan Larson, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Protocol, oh, okay. Andy?
Do you want me to jump in?
Sure.
Okay, so this is the new agenda item we added. Once again, this shows you how things evolve with the governor's orders, and they're coming down fast and furious. There was already a change to this one today, a little bit.
The protocol for the proclamations and other forms of recognition? Or is this?
No, what's up on the screen is the resolution regarding the governor's E O seven, section suspension and modification of tax deadlines and collection efforts.
Okay, okay.
So, this, I don't know if everybody has this, now you can follow along on the screen. This is something that the state is handing down to the municipalities to try to offset some of the financial burden on the residents of Connecticut due to the coronavirus. We don't really need to take any action today, and I have, the tax collector has given us an opinion. She's been working through her quasi-government association, which has her own attorney and has been advising them. But one thing I've learned, if not anything else, as a modification was already done today, you don't want to jump on these things right away. So, we have this in front of you. She's making a suggestion that we do a deferral instead of changing different percentages on interest. And the deferral, she wants to do it across the board, and what that does is it just pushes it out the ninety days. What we're hoping on, it might give us a cash flow issue, but in the order of the governor, it's stating that any escrow payments would not follow suit with the ninety days, they would have to be made on the regular time. So, we think that would suffice for the cash flow that we need. So, we wouldn't be losing any money. It would just be a deferral of ninety days, and we would get it at a different time in the, you know, the fiscal year. What I'm proposing is it's here, it's new, I want you guys to see it tonight. You can act on it if you want. My suggestion would be that you guys look at this, think about it, and we, I have this added to next Tuesday's agenda when you're sitting with the Board of Finance. And I would think you might want them to weigh in on it as well, seeing they kind of set the mill rate and do some other things around the taxes, and have a discussion and come up with a, a protocol on how to move forward. It has to be done before April twenty eighth, and if you guys forego the next Board of Selectmen meeting, won't till, I think it's May seventh. So, we can bring this up on Tuesday night, but I wanted to get you the latest information, and then there was a modification made to it this afternoon that really doesn't affect us on what we want to do. I didn't see it anyways that affected us, but I'll ask Ken. But I had Adrian, the tax collector here in Hebron, through her association, give us an advice on how they think it would best serve the residents of Hebron and that, and also not upset how we do business. So, she's proposing that, take a look at that stuff, and if the full Board of Selectmen agrees, we can add this on Tuesday's agenda when we have that workshop and deal with it then. And if the full Board of Selectmen agrees, we can add this on Tuesday's agenda when we have that workshop and deal with it then.
Dan Larson, that to me makes all the sense in the world. And since it is not imperative that it be done tonight, I think it's, it would be best to hold off, look it over, you know, discuss it. And then, you know, they make whatever decisions later on. Open it up to the board.
John Collins will stable it, although I think she did a very nice job.
Motion is fantastic, I'm sorry, Gail Larson, yes.
Gail Richmond, I think it would be preferable to wait until Tuesday.
Peter Casper, I agree.
I agree also.
Okay. Dan Larson, thank you very much. We need to go back to item 8E.
8E or 8F?
Proclamations and other forms of recognition.
Would I just get attached to something else?
About request to fly the flag, Andy?
No, I know what it is, I just, I think it's probably stuck to this
Okay.
Other, it happens now and then it gets stuck to a paperclip. Moving the stuff around from town to house to office. Well, anyways, I know what it is, we wrote it, so there for you to see. That's what we came up with. I think it's pretty standard of what the passports of selectmen have done. And I think if you you open yourself up for one, you got to do it for all, so as much as we want to work with the people, we've had an unwritten agreement with the veterans in Hebron. And I went to them the last time this request came forward and I got my answer, they wanted to leave it the protocol the way it was, so that's what I'm suggesting unless you guys have any better ideas.
Gail Richmond, I think what is in our agenda packet is the protocol which we discussed a few meetings back. The flags stay the way they are, but proclamations can be considered individually as presented to us. So I, I'm satisfied with it the way it is.
Going down the list, Mark?
I'm ready to vote, I, I think it's, Andy came up with a good and solid solution, which prevents us from having to make personal decisions every time somebody makes a request.
Gail spoke, Peter?
I agree with Peter Casper, I agree with Andy and how it's written and Mark's, I support Mark's comments as well.
John? John, yeah, it's fine, thank you, Andy, that's good.
It is.
And Daniel, me, I agree. And so I don't believe we need a motion on this protocol since it's already apparently our existing policy and we are just restating that 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 this is what the policy is. So I'm not sure if it gets put into a binder or whatever, so when people come to whatever, that this could be, you know, handed out and that this is what it is.
Well, it's, it's an unwritten agreement that we have right now. If you vote on it, it would formalize it and then it would make it a protocol, so I would vote. Okay. If you're all in agreement.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion that we adopt the flag protocol as presented on April 9th, 2020, being that it is the policy of the town of Hebron to not fly any flag other than the US flag, the POW flag and the State of Connecticut flag on town flag poles. Flags for special events or organization recognition may be displayed in other appropriate locations in response to a formal request from the organization and approved approval by the town manager and Board of Selectmen. And then the proclamation protocol, proclamation.
That's separate.
Okay, so let's get that one done. So going down the list, all in favor, Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
John?
John Collins, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Okay.
Perfect.
The other ones?
The next one is Selectmen, Casper had asked about this, and this is just my opinion. We looked at this, I bounced a lot of stuff off Donna in the office. And I believe with the the simple method of kiss, keep it simple stupid. I, I think you have to deal it on a request basis, on each individual request. I don't think you want to tie your hands. And I think you have savvy enough people that are serving on this board that could make decisions that are in the best interests of the town, so I think you should leave that the way it states.
Okay. Mark?
I agree with that.
I agree with that also.
Peter?
Peter Casper, agreed.
John?
John Collins, agree.
Dan Larson, I agree. Okay, so that we don't need to do anything with, so good. Thank you. Next is our consent agenda.
Don't, isn't the 8F to consider ordinance chapters next?
Yes, it is.
It's up on the screen, Dan.
No, I saw.
Sometimes it gets stuck to those paperclips like my last item did. If it's one page, they get stuck, but this is, this is a couple pages. It's item 8F. And it's consider ordinance chapter 320, article 12, abatement, deferral of property taxes for person persons of limited income annual interest rate review. You want me to read it, Dan, if you can't find it?
Yes, please, because I.
Okay.
Here, okay.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you. This would be the tax abatement order ordinance. Read it. And you can explain it. The tax abatement ordinance, chapter 320, article 12, was established by the Board of Selectmen in April of 2000, the ordinance was created pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 12-124A. The ordinance caps a property owner's taxes on a residential dwelling at 8% of the total income from any source. Taxes that exceed that amount are conveyed to the town in the form of a lien, creating and securing an obligation to reimburse the town in the amount of the taxes abated with interest. Those taxes, along with the interest, are paid to the town by not later than the date of sale or transfer of such real property or upon the death of the last surviving owner. As part of the annual interest rate review, board has the option to adjust the interest rate. Right now, the proposed resolution, be it resolved by the Hebrew Board of Selectmen, that the tax abatement interest rate remain at 3%. This is something.
Or be adjusted.
Or be adjusted. I'm just going to throw in real quick that Brian O'Connell is a person that I always looked up to, and he had very good, solid, strong reasons why this is a very realistic number. So I would suggest that it stay. Andy, did you want to do any other background on this?
No, I did, the town gets reimbursed as it states, it's pretty clear cut for the people that may not understand that don't deal with this. This is a way to try to keep some longtime residents or people on fixed income in their houses and living in the town that they either grew up in or lived in and raised their kids. And for as long as they can, this is a way, we've been doing this for quite a while. I should have gotten more information, I don't remember how many we have now. It wasn't a lot at one point, but I think it's increased over the years. I don't want to speculate, Donna has those numbers, but I think it is a benefit for longtime Hebron residents to have this option. And like I said, the town does get reimbursed at a certain, at the time of sale or or transaction of the real property, so I want to leave it open for the Board of Selectmen. Once again, this is another way that we can help people out, whether it stays at three, whether because of the situation and the climate that we're in now, you reduce it a little bit. I'll leave that up to you guys.
Gail Richmond, I'd like to reduce that 3%. This is not a money-making thing for the town, we are going to get our money back. I would like to keep it down to make it palatable for those folks who really need it. I don't want to wipe it out because there are administrative costs to the town. The staff has a lot of work to do in processing this. But I'd feel comfortable down around a 2% just to cover those costs to the town.
This is Peter Casper, just so I make sure I understand this, so the beneficiary of this would by reading this likely be deceased by the time the the taxes or the interest is due to the town. So they wouldn't necessarily be impacted while they're living in the home, they wouldn't be impacted while living in the home. It would only be upon their their death or the sale or transfer of the property, so, which could be 20 years from now, 10 years from now or something. So is there, is there a negative implication for a resident who's currently living in the home and getting this deferment or this tax abatement while they're in the home?
They have.
Thanks, Andy. Gail Richmond, I think some, a lot of these folks who participate in the program, the town collects the money, like you said, when they're deceased. But for some of them, they're going to eventually need to sell the home and move on to some other kind of assisted residence. So what we're doing then, if we're charging them interest, is we're taking still more money that they could use towards that relocation.
So, this is John Collins. I think we had a discussion last year, we increased it to three to reflect capital markets, I think. I think it's a little bit different now. I think the idea was that that we didn't want to lose any money on inflation. And so I, it's a, it's a great program. And, you know, we should keep it, obviously keep it going, but if we were to, I don't think inflation's more than 2% now, I'd support what Gail said. Especially now with, you know, what's happening.
This is Andy Tierney, I want to just touch on Peter's question. Some of these people in this program pay this off early, Peter, that they, they get it like in times like we're in now where they may lose their income or some of the household income, so they may need to get into deferred program. We have had people pay this off prior to a sale or a death of things that you've mentioned.
Okay, yeah, Peter Casper, yeah, no, I'm fully supportive of that, I'm just trying to make sure I under, understand it.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
This is a low, sorry, this is a low interest loan to people, the seniors and people in need and you know, I, I think, like I said, I think 2% is something we could support financially.
Mark Rivera, Andy, did they at times pay part of it off as they get funds? Or they usually kind of wait until the sale or they wait until, what, when do they usually start to pay this?
Well, it varies on on the person's financial situation, it's income-based. We've had some people that fell upon tough times and they've come in and paid it off, but I think without having all the participants in front of me, I think most of them do defer until the time of sale or until they are deceased, but there have been people that have gotten back on their feet and have paid it off as well. So it varies.
I have no problem reducing the interest and even want to go to 1.5, that's fine with me.
Peter Casper, just, just another question, how do we, as people's financial situations change, how are they made aware of this?
Well, you have to apply for this every year. And it's a, it goes by your income base, yet there's a criteria you have to meet, you have to supply your your information, your, your tax returns, you know, W2s, things like that. So there's a way to verify that in order to, to apply and be approved.
I was just thinking more along, Peter Casper, I was just thinking more along the lines of how do we make them aware, say, say someone's situation has changed and they could take advantage of this but don't know it's available? So is it just something that's, they would, they would, how do they come to you? Because they may not know this is available, like somebody new, in terms of their financial situation and income and all that has changed dramatically and now they're looking for assistance. Did they just come and talk about a tax problem and then you make them aware of this? Or how do, I'm just curious, how are, how are people aware of this for the first, how are they made aware of it the first time?
I can comment, this is Donna, I can comment on that, if you don't mind. We do publicize it starting in, in the spring, we'll publicize it weekly in the riveries to try to get the word out, and we put the criteria and information about it. And then we do send to any, any previous participant or even if it's someone who just has indicated an interest, we do send them mailing every year. We send out the application with the ordinance to remind them. And then if people contact the tax office or the assessor's office in indicating, you know, difficulty paying taxes, they'll go over what programs they have through the assessor's office, but they will also refer them up here to the town manager's office and we can explain the program that way.
It's Peter Casper, that's very helpful, thank you very much.
Dan Larson, is this information also given out at the senior center through their, their personnel?
Gail Richmond, yes, it is, I was going to add that on to what Donna said, it is publicized down there.
You know, again, Dan Larson, so this, this is not an unknown program. And there's actually a lot of programs that we, the town, do for not only people who are in financial difficulties, but for seniors, other seniors, other programs, veterans, there are programs to assist with their taxing, their taxes. So this is just one of a number of programs. So, you know, that being said.
This is John Collins. So inflation last year was two and a half percent in the United States, I expect that we're not, I expect we won't have inflation this year, given the price of oil, although I don't know. So I think inflation may go down even farther. Andy, do we have to decide this right now?
We have to decide it right now, but we could do it at the next meeting. I don't think there's a deadline, well, we want to get started with the program, but it could go to the meeting.
Can we, can we discuss it, can we do this in the next meeting so we can get some information, some data?
If you need to, yes.
What is, what does everybody else feel?
I think we should decide now because people will, this is Gail Richmond. I think we should decide now because people start to look into the program again. The ones that come back for a few years and others who have been hearing about it. So if we decide now, they know what they're getting into.
And this is Donna speaking, I, the ordinance does specify that the selectmen pass the resolution by May 1st.
There you go.
So it's your Casper, so John, in terms of data though, are you talking about a couple of days or, because we're meeting again on Tuesday?
Yeah, I was joking, yeah, I'm just curious to what the experts are saying about inflation for the next year. I don't want to set something at, at 2% and then have it come back that we're flat for the year, right? We have no inflation, I just, I wouldn't feel good about that, so.
This is Peter Casper, I, oh, go ahead, sorry.
No, this is Dave Ashy, if you don't mind. Pete, I just. Like, John, you were mentioning, we were trying to look at capital markets before, we had that conversation, so you were right, you know, this time last year, 10-year treasuries were between 2 and 2.5%, and I think that's why you guys chose 3%. So today, I think a 10-year treasury is about, I think it's like. So today, I think a 10-year treasury is about, I think it's like 0.7%. So to your point about the general inflation, and I just bring up the 10-year because that's usually, that's usually the benchmark for mortgages and other things and interest rates.
And it's, Donna, again, if I could just jump in, this interest rate would apply to applications and agreements that take place in July, and that would be for the life of those agreements. Prior years, they, we don't adjust the interest for prior years. So whatever the interest rate was when they entered into it each year, the way it was. So this would affect this, this year going forward.
Dan Larson, so this would be that interest rate for this, for Joe's loans day until that individual gets rid of the home? So this, this would not, does this fluctuate per household per year? Or is this, this be the benchmark for that household to continue on?
This is Donna. This is for agreements for the taxes due in, for this year, for July. And whatever interest rate we determine will be the interest rate for the life of this agreement. But if the same homeowner already has agreements with us for prior years, those interest rates remain the same. So it was, you know, a couple of years ago, we were at one and a half. So that does not change. And going forward, if you adjust it again for that same homeowner, it would be adjusted for those years. Each agreement, whatever the interest rate is for that year, stays that interest rate for the life of that agreement.
Gail Richmond here. So Donna, if I understand correctly, from past years, each year is a new agreement, which means the interest rate that's decided upon is for that year.
Right.
Whatever.
For the life of that agreement. But some people who have been doing it, say, somebody's been doing it from the very beginning. They have, you know, probably 15 agreements with us, one for each. And each interest rate stands on its own.
Okay. I had.
That's helpful.
Well, Gail Richmond here again. With that information that David said, it looks like instead of the 2%, we could go down to the one and a half.
I agree. Mark Verber, I agree.
Let's, let's just do it. Dan Larson, okay, hearing the discussion, I will amend my motion to be it resolved at the Hebron Board of Selectmen that the tax abatement interest rate be adjusted to 1.5% for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year? Just clarifying with Donna and Andy, is that the correct verbiage?
Well, the resolution that's proposed would suffice just with the addition of the amount you want to charge.
Okay. Again, be it resolved to the Hebron Board of Selectmen that the tax abatement interest rate be adjusted to 1.5%.
Okay.
Okay. Hearing the motion, any further discussion? Hearing, Mark?
Aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
John?
John Collins, aye.
Dan Larson, aye. Motion passes. Okay. Draft agenda for the May 7th meeting? Now, this is a regular, regularly scheduled town meeting, correct? Board of Selectmen?
That's what we're listed as, Town and Hebron Board of Selectmen's regular meeting on the 7th.
Okay. So just to clarify, because today is a special meeting, which limits us to doing certain things, whereas a regular meeting is a regular meeting. So again, anything people need to, whatever, get, get the information in. Is there anything that anybody can think of that we need to add or subtract from this document? Hearing none. Again, get, get your item suggestions in and moving on.
We can take out, I wanted to wait till you were done speaking, Danny, Andy Tierney. We can take out under old business, the protocol for the proclamation and other forms of recognition.
Oh, okay. Okay.
And, and before we jump too far, I just want to make sure you guys know exactly what we're doing. You had it, we had another Board of Selectmen meeting scheduled for next Thursday, but we're got, we have an agenda out for the joint budget meeting next Tuesday. So we'll add a few things to that agenda, like we just did about the tax deferment. That's already been added to that. But if you guys are in agreement, we probably should cancel the Board of Selectmen meeting that's scheduled for next Thursday and have the next one on the 7th that we're proposing.
Yeah. People's feelings?
Yeah, it's good.
Sounds good. Gail Richmond, sounds good.
Dan Larson, my only, my only suggestion, and, and, you know, it's been happening, but just, you know, keep us updated on the events of the town. You know, even though it does seem to change day by day, it does make interesting reading.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Then I guess at this point, it sounds like everyone's in agreement where the cancel.
We're, we'll issue a cancellation notice for that meeting. There actually was no agendas filed, but thank you for that. And then we'll see everybody on Tuesday when it comes to that.
Okay. The consent agenda. Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the following consent agenda items and motions contained therein as if individually adopted. And we've got the approval of the March 3rd, 2020 regular meeting budget workshop, the March 5th, 2020 regular meeting, the March 10th, 2020 regular meeting budget workshop, the March 16th, 2020 emergency meeting, the March 23rd, 2020 special meeting, and then the tax refunds as listed. Does anybody have anything that they want pulled? Hearing none, all in much, all in favor of moving consent agenda items as just read? Mark?
Mark Verbera, aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
John?
John Collins, aye.
Dan Larson, aye. Thank you. Next are the, I guess we have a public comment. Again, Dan Larson, I'll open it up for public comment. Donna, is anyone out there wishing to make comment? Okay. Thank you. Okay, lines and reports. Mark?
We talked about a bit about RAM already. In my conversations with them, they all seem to be working towards bringing the budget somewhere in around zero and hopefully they can get that done. They're still discussing where those cuts should come from. One comment I wanted to make about going back to school virtually. Kids are still having a few problems with social media, so I'm dealing with those. And this was kind of sad. I heard Scott and I, Leslie, were, were talking about checking up on students. So we're going out there and seeing what's happening to some students who haven't signed up for the virtual school. And some of them have moved and the response was that they couldn't afford to stay where they were and they went to live with relatives. So that was kind of sobering, hearing that. And pretty much we're, we're going to continue the next week or two to track kids down that haven't signed up. It's, I'm done.
Okay. Thank you. That is sad. Thank you. Gail? Is she coming across?
No.
I don't hear her.
No, why don't you jump to somebody else, maybe to figure out what's going on?
Okay. Peter? Peter?
His mic's muted, I think.
Okay, mine, this is Gail Richmond, my mic is unmuted now.
All right, go ahead, Gail, you go, this is Peter, and then I'll follow you in order.
All right. So the Hebron Board of Ed, the youngsters are participating in the distance learning. The emergency meals are being provided as needed. And the Hebron Board of Ed is meeting tonight, as we are. The library had to cancel the last Board of Trustees meeting due to the coronavirus. But for those people who can't go in and get their books, I want to emphasize again that there are plenty of online resources. All you need is a library card. If you don't have one, you can get a library card online now. So they have magazines, books, movies, audiobooks. So take a look at their website. The Senior Center obviously is closed for all activities. However, the home-delivered meals are still being delivered. The congregant meals are on a grab-and-go basis. And the social work services are being provided for anyone who needs them. And how that's done will be determined when the social worker speaks to the individual. And that's what I have.
Okay. Peter?
Okay, Peter Casper, Parks and Rec, the Recreation Commission did not meet. Those meetings were canceled. I don't have an update on the Board of Finance, but if I may, we, I think we have the pleasure of our chairman of the Board of Finance, Dave Esche, on the line. Dave, is there anything you'd like to mention in lieu of my update?
No, we haven't met, obviously. And then we're looking forward to the workshop starting next Tuesday to get on with the budget.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. John?
I got nothing. None of my committees met that.
Okay. Andy?
As I stated earlier, the RAM Campus Improvement Committee had selected a low bidder, Milton Beebe and Sons out of Wellington, I believe. We're waiting for DOT to have to approve that as well and the funding for that project. And then we'll move forward. I hope to hear back from DOT with a new signed PAL agreement next week.
Okay. Good. And then myself. My name. The watershed, the San River watershed has not met yet. Hebron Historic Properties Commission, there are some emails going back and forth. For those who haven't had a chance to get to the Peters' house, you really take a look inside. It's, it's really coming fantastically. John, were you able to get over there the other?
Yeah, I did. I should say, I met with John Menard and it's, it is, it's a, it's a really, it's been a lot of, lot done since I last saw it last year. And it's going to be, it's going to be a jewel. You know, I can't wait till we are able to open the downs, I think we will be able to open the downstairs at some point. But it's got a lot of interesting history and it's, it's really, it's really something. Thank you.
And they've actually got a lot of the L done now. And the new door is in, or doors, it's, it's, it's really coming along, a lot of finished work. So I think people will be impressed. Fire Department, there is a rumor, I don't know how true it is, but supposedly there's going to be a rabbit running around the town a little bit on Sunday. So we'll see if that's true. It's not open season on Bunnies now, remember that. So he's a nice guy. Other than that, the Hebron Historic Properties Commission are still planning the Rosie Riveter events that'll be going on, as I said, back in August. So hopefully that'll still go on. And other than that, I just, you know, again, thank everybody for, you know, really putting up with so, so many difficult times and, you know, Ted's Market, you know, so many of the businesses that are doing their best under a really tough situation. You know, support our local businesses, you know, they are our neighbors. And do it safely. What else to say?
Dan, thank you for the masks, too, that you brought over the other day. Everybody's running short and those are the top-quality ones, too.
You're welcome. You're welcome. And, yeah. I'm getting my sewing needles out. My wife has been very busy. So it's, who says the person, who says we can't sew? Okay, great. Anybody else have anything else before we close? Okay.
Andy, Andy, you're doing a great job with everything that's going on. It's commendable. You are.
Thank you. There's no I in team. It's, it's everybody's, everybody's coming and stepping up and it's a great town. And Hebron's coming together with the residents, the staff, the fire department, the police. So Parks and Rec, I mean, I feel really bad for Parks and Rec. They're just devastated. So we're going to have to dig our way out. We're all just keeping good thoughts and looking for the light at the end of the tunnel. But thank you very much for your comments.
Yeah, I was going to say, you and Donna have been and, and the other staff, you know, Randy, doing what he can on the inspections and, and all the public works employees, Parks and Rec employees, the senior citizens, or the senior employees, AHM dealing with the issues they are, the food bank. We are truly a blessed community.
We are.
Thank you all. Gail, you want something to say?
I'd love to say, Gail Richmond, and I'll make the motion to adjourn at seven, at 9:14.
Thank you, everybody. And thank you.
Thank you.